I'm going to call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, July 18th, 2017 at 7:03 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notes?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. You know, I'm open to anything at this point. Any new experience? So, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council decisions. Is there anybody signed in?
No.
Is there anybody that would like to speak during public comments regarding an item that's on the agenda that would like to speak now? Or you can speak when that item comes up on the agenda. Nobody wants to speak at all, period? Item number four, approve common council minutes from July 11th, 2017.
So move. A second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding an application for a Class A retailer's license, fermented malt beverages from Casey's Marketing Company. Casey's general store, number 1922, located at 464 South John Paul Road. And Al, can you just explain what a Class A license involves selling?
Class A licenses, as the one that's being requested this evening, is for retail sales, in this case of fermented malt beverages, so beer and wine. Again, retail sales would be those that are prepackaged and sold for consumption off-site. So think opposite of a bar.
So, any hard liquor sold?
That is not being requested under this application. Only beer and wine. Oh, okay. And just so folks kind of remember, and we have representatives from Casey's here that are available for questions and could give a brief presentation of their application. But just so folks recall, this is an item that was previously reviewed by the council back in February of this year. At the time, it was declined, but since then, we have gone through a process to revise our ordinances. And this application that is before you today should be viewed upon in the light of the existing new ordinance and not under the previous ordinance. So I just remind folks of that, that the new ordinance in place is the one that would govern this request at this time. So just remind everybody of that.
So is this like a new application, Mark?
Yeah, well, it's being addressed as a new application, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
I'd just like to comment on this. In the list of standards that we are supposed to follow and apply to every applicant, I'm looking at compatibility for proposed use within with the neighborhood. And within the neighborhood of this facility is a new school facility catering to teenagers right across the parking lot. And that's way too close, way too available to teenagers. Secondly, a couple items down, demonstrable positive economic impact on the city. We're a small city, and our market for this type of product, sales, is limited. Every license we issue dilutes that market to the point where we're going to get, we're very close to the point where we could start hurting businesses that are already there. And I don't think we can do that. I think we've got plenty of outlets for this type of product right now we don't need anymore. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Dave. Would anybody else like to comment?
I just had a question regarding the design of the store, the Casey's store. Can you share with us how you feel that the design of your store is appropriate for the sale of beer and packaged goods?
And can you just please state your name?
Emma Monheim.
And your...
I'm the supervisor for the store and the agent of alcohol for.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure what you mean as far as design.
Well, because you're dealing with underage store buyers as well as age-appropriate. So how do you manage the sale of alcohol when it's dealing with both ages within that size of a store?
Well, I train my store managers to train their employees and keep track of them. And anyone that looks under the age of 27 gets ID. I always feel like the older I get, the younger they look, so I tend to ID people that are older than that myself. But they need to ID all of those people. And I verify that when I come in and do our auditing. I check in. There's ways. We have to scan their IDs when they ID them. They have to physically see them, scan them under the barcode. If they don't, and they clearly know they're old enough, they can punch in a number. It's usually today's date and the appropriate year. That's how I can distinguish between if they're carding and not carding.
And the use of what cameras? I mean, what else do you have to ensure the appropriate sale and use of packaged goods at the, you know, the age-appropriate?
We have cameras up at the register towards the doors. There's, I believe, seven in her store.
Okay. And, you know, how many adults do you have working at either the counter or in that front area of your store at any given time?
There's always one person scheduled at the register and one person in the kitchen. There's two people on duty. During the day, there's going to be more because the store manager's going to be there in addition to the register person and the kitchen person. And we don't employ anyone under 18. They're all over 18.
And anyone at the counter would have been licensed?
I want all of the employees to get their license.
Okay.
I have a question. You audit the barcodes, then, basically. You do that weekly or daily?
When I come do our auditing, I'm not there every day. I would love to be there once a week, but I have seven, almost eight stores, so I split it up between them. But I go back and look in her electronic journal, and I can look different cashiers different times of the day and see what it has, the age verification data on there, so.
And penalty of violating that in your store, the policy is, I'm just curious. Do you terminate immediately, or do you...
If they fail a sting, they get suspended without pay for seven days, the second time they're terminated.
Yeah, I hear you. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I'm wondering, what do you plan on doing for signing? Alcohol signing?
I know with it being so close to the school, we probably won't have signs outside of the store. Most of my other stores that have, within a certain distance of this, they're just not allowed to put the outdoor signage up there. So I would, I would almost think that would be the case with them being that close.
Okay, and then also, what about your space? Where are you going to put it?
Right now, she has nine doors that'll get condensed down. The last three doors will be for her alcohol. And it's my understanding that she has to have a lock so she won't have warm alcohol out there. It'll just be in the cooler so they can lock it at night. When you, I don't know what your hours are, but...
Okay. And what are your hours?
What hours I work?
For Casey's, what are the hours that they're open?
What time do you open?
24 hours.
24 hours, okay. So then...
There'll be locks on the doors. They'll physically lock them so they can't after...
It's 9 o'clock, right, Chief?
Yes.
So they'll get locked at 9:00 and then unlocked in the morning when it's the time. The registers also won't actually physically let them scan alcohol through after that time. So let's say you're busy, you don't know what's happening, it's 10:00 after, you don't realize, you try to scan it, it won't go through. It locks up.
I just have a question before you ask more. Mark, could we make it a contingency that they have no outside signage? For alcohol?
Yeah, you can impose certain reasonable, relevant limitations on the issuance of the alcohol license. And as she's indicating, other municipalities have done that if they can show, you need to show some factual basis for it. And the speaker's indicated one commonly is, depending on where it's located, vis-à-vis, say, educational institutions. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
May I point out that that property is rented? So technically, and according to the law, we've, it is not school district property. Belongs to a private individual. Yes, that's not, that is privately owned. That is not school district property. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
Al, question for you. What other locations in town have the same license?
The other Class A fermented malt beverage holders of only fermented malt beverage sales would be the QuickTrip and Travel Mart. Piggly Wiggly and Beverage Mart also have a Class A license, but they're intoxicating liquor in addition to the fermented malt beverage. So from a technical standpoint, it's only those two.
And has a... Is a Travel Mart closing?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because didn't you hear that they were closing?
It hasn't been brought to my attention, but it wouldn't need to be brought to my attention if that were truly the case.
And what kind of license does the, what's the restaurant across the street from the school? Red Zone. What's the license that the Red Zone has?
Class B.
Same.
No. Class A is prepackaged, retail sales to be consumed off-site. Class B is for consumption onsite. So again, remember the little trick. Class A, you take it away. Class B, you're at a bar.
And they're not selling, this is not like liquor, hard liquor that they would be selling, like vodka or brandy or something like that in this requested application? So you wouldn't necessarily card people going into the locker, but you would card them when they...
When they come up to the register.
Okay.
Do you have cameras outside, too?
No. I wish we did, but no.
Okay.
Have you had any citations at Casey's stores in the state of Wisconsin for selling to underage?
Beloit did, I think it was a year and a half ago. The date could be wrong. It was before I was a supervisor.
And that's one of the stores that you supervise?
No, it's not one of the stores I supervise, but I'm their alcohol agent.
Okay.
I took over being their alcohol agent after the citation occurred, so I had to go to the meeting and whatnot for it.
Do you mind telling us exactly what an alcohol agent's responsibilities and roles are?
The sort of thing for one and then, I make sure, you know, they're training them appropriately so we don't have any citations, make sure they're all doing what they're supposed to do, get all the alcohol license, kind of oversee and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing so we don't have those underage sales and sort of thing.
Mark, what are the conditions of revoking and, like, what is the process, I guess? If a license is issued and then there's violations, what kind of process happens if it has to be revoked? Or what would cause a municipality to revoke a license? That's my next question.
Well, the generally reasons for revocation of an alcohol license would be repeated violations of the conditions of their license, or repeated violations of ordinances related to that license. And that includes statutory criteria for holding a license, having a disorderly house, that sort of thing is generally the basis for it and is generally a repeated situation. The process is that it begins with a formal complaint that's filed by a resident, often can be a police chief or some other official, that they file a formal complaint to seek revocation or suspension of the license. And then the, there's a hearing held before the common council, and then they have, both sides have an opportunity to present their evidence to the common council, both the complaint, the individual filing the complaint, and then the holder of the license so that they have their due process and being able to present their side of it. It's, there'd be usually a court reporter, there'd be testimony under oath, cross-exam, right to cross-examine, and so forth. And then following that, there'd be a decision by the council on whether or not to revoke or suspend. So that's, that's the process. In summary.
Thank you. Can you tell me how many thefts of alcoholic beverages there have been at the stores that you, that are in your name?
That I'm aware of?
Yeah.
I had, my home store, they had, I think it was Nukleris, the bottles. They kept, they don't have to lock up. They're warm beer coming out. They ended up moving it and come to find it with some young kids coming and taking a bottle out. Her parents actually caught her. So we just had to remove the product from where it was so that wouldn't happen anymore. Other than that, I'm not aware of.
And that's a different design from what you have in this store?
Yeah, if, the back end shelf, she had it on the back there. They were stocking, the beer vendors was putting a display there, and it had the open six-pack bottles. And they were finding that it was gone, but they weren't finding who it was until after they'd moved it.
To your knowledge, has any store, Casey's store in Wisconsin, had their license suspended or revoked that you're aware of?
The Beloit one was suspended for seven days.
Okay, that's what they, okay. Other than that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Or I think it would be helpful if council shared their thoughts and what they're thinking and what is going into their deliberations, just a little bit for the public's sake? Any further questions?
I think I was basically looking to hear anything different that would change the way I, the way I would potentially vote on this license. But I think Dave covered all the topics. I'm not comfortable with the location, the compatibility of the neighborhood, where it is in proximity to the school, not, not the building owned by someone else that the school is using, but the school itself. I believe that some of the other bullet points on there with proximity of other licensed establishments and whether or not it would be positive economic impact on the city. I don't think that any of our establishments currently selling beer or have a Class A license is running away with the dollars. Based off of those reasons, I, unless somebody else has different information that piques my interest, that'd be my thoughts.
I had a question. How many of your stores throughout the state of Wisconsin have Class A liquor licenses? Do you know?
Of mine personally, Elkhorn and Milton are the only ones that don't right now.
So, the population of the cities that they are in, do you have like a general idea of the size of those cities? I mean, are we talking like Milwaukee, Madison? So that like Elkhorn and Milton would be the only very small population?
My Belleville store is about 3,000 people. It's pretty small. Nukleris is going to be opening up. It'll have alcohol, I believe it's 2,500. Beaver Dam is my biggest one. It's 16,000. So they're kind of all over the place.
Chief of Police? Just so you don't feel left out. Can you tell me how many underage drinking tickets have been issued in the city so far in 2017? And do you know the number for 2016? Is it a lot? Is it, have you seen an increase, a decrease, or... We haven't had any large parties busted lately. I guess we'd all would have heard about it.
Well, in looking at the chief's monthly statistic report, which shows the last four months, there has been one alcohol-related arrest.
Is it underage or just overall alcohol?
Nope, it just says alcohol, so I apologize.
But I know the underage may be something completely different.
Like public intoxication?
Oh, I see what you're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's a call description out of our dispatch center. So that was, that came into the 911 center as an alcohol-related call that we then responded to, and it was underage and kind of that, the adult, the store, and a variety of things. So that, this statistical report doesn't speak to arrests and citations, so I have to do some research.
Intoxicated subject is zero.
Again, even if it wasn't zero, that could be wrong.
I guess I have to say that I have, you know, kind of a varying opinion regarding this issue. If it was a new store, if you were just building it and were applying for a new license in that manner, and you chose to build it right on top of a new school that was being built, I would say, well, too bad. You're making a poor choice, and I would vote against your license. However, you're already there, and the new school's being built in your backyard. So you're kind of stuck where you are. And, you know, you're not going to move your store just to get your license. So you're in a position where we have to make a decision based on where you already are at. And to do that and punish you for where you're at doesn't quite seem fair either. I believe in some of our research, we've already found that underage drinkers do not, aren't really the ones that purchase the beer. They typically do not go into facilities and buy the beer. It is people who are of age that go in to purchase the beer. And so it's not really the facility that's dealing with the problem to begin with. Society and other people are dealing with the problem. So I guess I'm not in a position really to vote against it because it's next door to a school. There are too many other issues that need to be looked at. I don't think by having it next door to a school, that's what's going to raise the underage drinking problem. Now, if there are other things that people can convince me of that would be, pose a problem by having Casey's have the license, I'm happy to listen to them. But this alone doesn't pose the issue to me.
Have you had any, I'm sorry. Have you had any of your stores in the state of Wisconsin had their liquor license revoked? Oh, you didn't, okay.
None of mine have failed a sting. I don't know if that makes any difference to you either.
But employees come and go. And I'm sure you're a great employee, but your hope may not be to stay at Casey's the rest of your life, maybe be to own your own Casey's store in another state or something.
Just curious, how long has Casey's been here in Milton?
Has it 20 years?
19.
19? 19 years.
I think it's important, and I want to just play off of what you just said, if that's okay, fellow older person. It's usually parents, at least the statistics I've looked at. It's usually parents or 18 or older peers who are buying the alcohol for underage drinkers. So, just so you know, a lot of parents buy it for their children, so.
And I train all of my employees that if a group of kids or two kids or 21-year-olds come in, they need to card all of them. If they all don't want to provide their IDs, then they don't sell to them because we need to know that even those kids out in the car are old enough. So they're even encouraged to ask them all to come in to get IDed, so.
Have you had any complaints? And I know we're very focused on alcohol stuff, but I think it goes to the overall how you run your business. Have you had any other consumer complaints as far as any other rules and laws that you're supposed to abide by running Casey's, like through consumer protections? Or have you had any citations or violations for anything at your, at these businesses?
No.
Has a store received any citations for even bad pumps or whatever, or bad gas?
No, if they have, I don't know about them.
Okay.
My kind of opinion on this is I think it's an area that doesn't necessarily have another location that sells the same type of alcohol, I guess. As far as a Class A goes, the rest of them are, you know, a lot of them over on this side of talent are closer together, so it's kind of away from others to some extent. But also, I think that it's always in your best interest to make sure that you're not selling to minors. There's no reason you'd want to do that. There's no reason you'd want alcohol to be stolen, so I think it's always in your best interest to prevent that. So I don't see those as being too much, I guess, of a major concern in the sense that you're always going to be trying to, it's the best interest of companies to proactively prevent that. So I also think that in some cases, maybe being close to the school might actually deter more underage people going, in my thought. I think they're just as likely to go to the pig, for example, and get it there. Or go to QuickTrip for that matter and try it there. That's just my two cents on that part. But I do think it's a section of the city that as you're coming in, that isn't covered by that type of thing. So as far as the economical side of things is I don't think, you know, that part of the market necessarily is flooded with it.
Do you know what your turnover rate is for employees?
She's my best store for keeping employees. She doesn't have a lot of turnover.
So you're not constantly having new employees that don't have experience, or you're not constantly retraining people on...
No, we retrain them. Well, they get retrained often. They get trained upon hire, and then, you know, big events come out, prom, homecoming, all that sort of stuff. We send out big things for retraining. They need to be fresh on it. And we also have our own people that come and do so. And we also have our own people that come and do stings as well. So it's not just the city or the county or whatever coming in. We have Casey's people that come in and do it as well. So we need to constantly retrain them. Otherwise, they get lenient. They don't worry about it. It's never going to happen to me. And then that's when it does, so.
What kind of increase for your parking lot do you expect? If you get the license? I know for your parking, coming in, in and out, you can go in one way. And when you're pulling up to the front, you can either go park parallel one side or the other. Do you see any problems with any kind of congestion or anything?
Not any more than there already is. I mean, I don't see how we could make the parking lot any bigger without physically moving the store. I know it's kind of a wonky thing to get in and out of.
And then my other question is, it just seems like the store is doing very well. So, I mean, why have the license?
It's just going to do better. I mean, we always want to handle those other sales. And by not offering that product, we can't sell them and make that additional. You know, it's just another way to boost your sales and get other people in there.
So are you planning on asking for the other type of license?
Not that I'm aware of. If it is in the future, I don't know about it. The only stores that have it are new stores that I acquired that already had it. They were existing with that license, so.
You have somebody behind you?
Yeah, I just want to say something, if I can. I'm Heather Farida. I'm the manager at Casey's in Milton. I am, the seven years that I've been there, I have never once failed a sting of any cigarette sting, anything else. I'm very hard on my employees. I've had most of them for five years plus. Very few have ever left me. If they do, they go to college. I don't lose many. They get retrained every year. If I find them, if I'm with them on one day and I find that they're not checking an ID, they get pulled aside. I don't play that game. We're a fun store, but I don't mess around with that kind of stuff. That's really all I really wanted to say. I just wanted to kind of get that out there. They're very hard. I'm very hard on them about any IDs of any sort. So that's all I had.
I just wanted to add to Linda's comment, just so folks understand. Tonight, they're requesting a Class A fermented malt beverage.
Right.
And even in the event that the council agrees to grant that license, if they wanted to expand that license, it would require another approval by this body. And at that time, this body could turn that down and say, you know what? We're only going to allow you to sell beer. So it's not an inherent that, you know, they say, ah, I think we're just going to sell beer. And then a couple of months later, they decide to expand their inventory. That would require approval by this body, so. Just wanted to make sure that folks understood that. Yes.
And if we approve this license, does it mean we have to give every gas station that wants a license a license?
No. Each, you know, by the new ordinance, as drafted and adopted by the council, each one of these items, these future requests should be looked upon on an individual basis and based on the own merits of their own application. There is no longer a quota, which means there's no longer a cap, but there also is no longer a minimum. If the council wanted to deny every single license that ever came in front of them for the next 100 years, they could. That's their discretion.
I would move to deny this application. No.
Scott had a comment to make, so if you can hold on to that. Dave?
Just very quickly, you recall we passed the new ordinance, 432, in the last...
Thank you for that reminder. Linda, any other comments, questions from anybody? Larry?
Well, I, this is something that I'm having a problem with. I just, selling alcohol at gas stations is just... It just seems to be, well, first of all, for somebody that travels a lot, it takes away from your selection of all the other stuff. Because I know you said that you're going to condense stuff down. So then you're probably not going to have a lot of things that people are used to picking up, which I would expect you to do. I mean, that's pretty much what you have to do. I just, I'm not real comfortable with this. We do, we are just a small town of 5,600 people. You know, how many places do you need to have to buy liquor? Beer? That's all I have to say.
Larry? No? Okay. Dave, you want to go?
I move to deny this application.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions, comments, or debate?
I have a question for Dan. Has there been any changes to the budget since we got it? Any changes to our expenses or anything since?
Have we had an influx of cash lately?
Yeah.
No.
Nothing coming in?
No.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Alderman Adams, motion to deny the application for a Class A retailer's license for fermented malt beverages. Alderman Zajek.
Any other further questions or comments? Okay, do you want to do a roll call vote? Will that be helpful?
And I means that you're saying no. Just want to remind everybody that, right? The way the motion was read.
All those in favor of the motion say aye would be all those in favor of denying the application.
Okay, so if you vote, all those in favor to deny the motion would say aye. Everybody understand that?
To deny the license.
To deny the license, yeah, sorry. Thank God I'm not voting, right?
I just have a question for Dave on the motion. Your motion is to completely deny. So any of these contingencies that have been brought up, you're not interested in?
I'm just interested in denial.
Are you guys ready for a roll call vote? So Inga will lead that.
Alderperson Adams?
Aye.
Alderperson Lane?
Nay.
Alderperson Roush?
No.
Alderperson Holbrook?
Nay.
Alderperson Zajek?
Aye.
And Alderperson Clark?
Aye.
I have three, three.
Thank you very much.
So just to be clear, the motion technically fails for lack of a majority.
Well, I have...
Three, three.
It's a tie vote, and the mayor votes in the case of a tie.
Okay, so she would need to vote in this case? Right, okay.
So I have asked as many questions as I possibly could think of to help me process this. And I've been thinking about this over the past few weeks. And about some of the comments that were said, and tonight too. And I do, you know, I agree that it's not underage drinkers that are going in and buying alcohol. It's typically house parties or somebody that is of age providing alcohol. And I know from experience in my job and raising kids, they usually don't buy it inside the city, on a busy street. And I agree that it's more of a society and a cultural thing. You know, I think about how our community loves get-togethers and we promote that. We have activities at Schilberg Park, which is owned by the school. Fourth of July, we sell alcohol. Wally's Fest, we sell alcohol in Schilberg Park. We had a bowling alley that served alcohol and all the school kids went there on field trips to bowl. And so I think if our overall concern is the cultural of drinking that we have in our city, then we have some work to do. It isn't our establishments that are selling to underage drinkers. I mean, we have a really good record of responsible service. Casey's has a history of making responsible decisions in their business practice. I don't particularly like gas stations selling alcohol, but the fact of it is, we gave a license to QuickTrip, we gave a license to Travel Mart. You know, so I think about those things too. So I'm going to vote no. So that isn't exactly giving them a liquor license, though. I've just voted no to deny them.
I have a question, I guess, for Casey's then. If we're done with that vote, right?
Well, do we now make an amendment?
I was going to ask a question. The reason I want to ask the question is because that may affect what we're making for them. If you don't mind.
No.
My question was, one of the stipulations is kind of tossed about earlier, and you kind of mentioned this possibility of maybe no signage or very limited signage on the outside. If you were to say no signage, would that be a problem at all?
No, I have that in other stores.
Alcohol signage?
No alcohol signage, that's a bit, sorry.
I have stores that are further from a school
Sure.
that don't allow it, so that's not a problem.
Okay, so that's the question I had, was to see if that was a problem or not.
No.
And then I was just wondering, is there a possibility that you could get a camera outside?
I myself personally can't guarantee it, but I can most certainly bring it up to my boss and, you know, let him know that it's a concern of your guys' for sure and see if we can get something up there.
So is that something that we could make a contingency mark as outdoor or outside camera? Since we're making a contingency on no alcohol signage outdoors?
You can certainly request that. I presume what it is is related to the sale of alcohol. You wish to have a camera, I think you should indicate where, so they have some guidance on that. I think you're in the parking lot immediately in front of the store. I assume you're asking for, so they can monitor the situation that was mentioned, where there may be multiple youth in a car. And so that would assist their personnel in knowing when they need to ask for more IDs than the person that they're just asking for. And I think, I assume that's one of your concerns as well, which is why you're mentioning that that would assist the store personnel in complying with what I understand to be their requirements for training is to recognize when there's youth in the vehicle and ask for their IDs as well. Is that what you were asking to get at? Okay.
In the event that an adult might get stopped by somebody underage, not from the area, okay, will you buy me a six-pack? Here, I'll give you 20 bucks, you know, that kind of a thing. That's kind of what I was thinking too.
Two, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that I understand and that we're not potentially creating a difficult situation. Did we require cameras in front of the QuickTrip? I don't recall. Did we require cameras in front of Travel Mart? Okay. Yeah.
I guess I'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion that we approve the Class A liquor license for Casey's with the stipulation that there be no alcohol signage on the exterior of the building and with the recommendation to look into getting a camera on the outside. But it is a recommendation.
May I ask for just an adjustment before we go forward? No alcohol sign on the premises. I offer that as... Is that okay? All right. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
I'll second it.
Can you read the motion back? Inga?
It was a motion to approve the Class A license for Casey's with the following contingencies. No outdoor fermented malt beverage signage and installation of outdoor surveillance cameras. Recommendation, okay.
Does everybody understand the motion and did everybody hear it?
Motion to approve the Class A license for Casey's with the following one contingency. No outdoor fermented malt beverage signage and the recommendation of the installation of outdoor surveillance cameras.
I'm sorry, but I'm not quite clear. Are we saying no signs in windows either? I just want to be sure we're clear on this because I don't want to have to come back and say, well, we meant this. We meant this.
From the exterior? No signs visible from the exterior?
Right, if that's your intent, then that's fine, is you don't want... Yeah, I think... Well... What I'm just contemplating is that there's going to be certain interior signs that are going to be visible from the exterior. All right. So I think what you perhaps are getting at is there would be no alcohol product signs or alcohol-related signs on the exterior of the premise nor on the front window of the windows of the store. I think that's what you're getting at. Any interior signs that might be visible, you're not concerned about that, right?
Is that how they handle it in other areas, that you don't have outdoors signage?
Some of them have neons, but if you guys don't want them in the window...
Okay, all right, okay. Read it back.
Motion to approve the Class A retailer's license for fermented malt beverages for Casey's with the contingency of no fermented malt beverage signage visible from the exterior and the recommendation of installation of outdoor surveillance cameras. No, I'm sorry, I was trying to...
Listen, so tell me again.
What I understand, the intent of the motion and the individual moving can indicate whether that's accurate. The motion is to approve the Class A beer license application with the condition of no alcohol-related signage on the attached... of no alcohol-related signage on the attached to the exterior of the premises or in the, attached to the front window, windows of the premise, premises, excuse me. Is that correct? All right.
Please, since you said, did that follow you?
Yes.
So can you read it back? And thank you for your patience and all your hard work, Inga.
So motion to approve the Class A retailers license for Casey's with contingency of no alcohol-related signage attached to the exterior of the premises or attached to the front windows of the premises and the recommendation of the installation of outdoor surveillance Got it now?
Say, was that your intent? And that's your, all right. All right, okay, so are we ready to vote? And let's do a roll call vote, Inga.
Uh, we are going... We will start with Alder Clark. We're going the other way now.
And a vote... Okay, a vote no is no.
Okay, Zajak?
Aye.
Roche? And Lane?
Aye.
And Adams?
No.
So we have a tie.
And I vote in favor.
And the motion carries.
And now we can move on with number six. And I, I want to thank the council for their careful and thoughtful deliberation and I know you take it seriously. I know you've put time and effort, this was not a flippant decision and I appreciate the time that you took to think about it and talk about it tonight. And Ryan, go ahead.
Also want to say thank you to Casey's people for coming here for this kind of grilling, but it helps us to make these decisions a lot, having people here that we can ask questions of and thanks for putting up with us.
It is, it's a very complex issue, not only in Milton, but societally. And yeah, it requires a lot, whether you're a parent or, you know, a citizen of any, any age, so, thank you.
Okay, item number six, discussion and possible action to approve new and renewal
He's being very generous. I've been here since five, six, ten, very long.
Five minutes, you have time for starting again. Okay, number six, discussion and possible action to approve new and renewal operator license. Inga, do you want to talk about this? Or Al?
I was scrolled down to it. The clerk's office has reviewed, along with the police department, four renewals and eight new operator applications since the June 20th council meeting. All applicants have passed their background check. We may want to double check that Marla's Howell one, but staff...
What are they licensed to operate?
It ain't heavy machinery. This is for the, the sale of, sale of alcohol.
And we don't have a quota on how many people can sell alcohol?
No.
Okay.
Chief, can I, these are the people that you'll also touch base with then, right, as part of that training or at least through their, through their agents, right? They'll...
What I'll be, yeah, I'll be speaking with individuals who are making the point of sale transactions.
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Item number seven, discuss, discussion and possible action accepting the bid for the Putman Parkway extension project.
Tonight, we're going to be talking a lot about Putman Parkway, much as we did at the plan commission meeting. As folks may recall, we, the council approved the engineering for the Putman Parkway extension, which is an extension of Putman Parkway from its existing terminus at County Trunk Highway M, going to the east through the city-owned property and into the backyards of Rock County LLC property. In order to do that, we went out to bid and received three bids. We opened those bids on July 11th and GMS Excavators, Inc. was the low bidder. $672,100 was their bid. Staff and Baxter and Woodman have reviewed the bid and believe that, has found those, that responded to be a responsible bidder and is recommending to the council, accept the bid for the Putman Parkway extension project to GMS Excavators, Inc. in the amount No need for a roll call.
I was gonna say, I make a motion that we accept the bid for the Putman Parkway extension project to GMS Excavators.
May I have questions?
Yep, yeah.
This bid bond, I believe, I know the answer to this, but I just want to clarify.
That's held? Is it held by the city?
Yes.
Okay, we actually hold or retain that bond. Okay, that's what I figured, but wanted to double check. Thank you.
We slip it under Howie's mattress.
Now the secret's out. Any other questions or concerns? Why are we doing this? Everybody knows why we're doing this. Everybody knows where it's located? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, discussion and possible action on a construction engineering work order for the Putman Parkway extension.
So what was previously approved was the bid for the construction, the actual physical construction. What is up for discussion at this point in possible action is the engineering work that will be conducted by Baxter and Woodman, which is the city's contract engineer. This work for this project would be in excess of their normal annual contract, so we need to enter into a work order for them to provide engineering for this project. They have estimated that cost to not exceed $38,800.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Putman work order.
Same.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further questions or comments or discussions? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on right-of-way plat of dedication for Putman Parkway extension.
So we have agreed who's going to construct it, we've agreed how it's going to be constructed and this action will be where it is constructed. This is the right-of-way plat dedication, which dedicates the right-of-way for the future Putman Parkway extension. There's actually two plats of dedication, one through the city property, which is kind of informally known as the Bellardi property that the city purchased earlier this year. And the second segment is through the backyard, backyard properties of Rock County LLC property, which is where the Diamond Assets facility will be constructed later this year. So there are two dedications, so I would, I would ask that either there be two separate motions or one motion at least identifies both of those plats of dedication.
Because I make a motion that we approve the plat of dedication for Putnam Parkway right-of-way to the subject backyard properties of Rock County LLC parcel.
Second.
And then just a note, so you're approving it and accepting it? Pre- and accepting, yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Also make a motion that we approve and accept the plat of dedication for Putnam Parkway right-of-way for the city of Milton parcel.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with multiple seconds. Okay, item number 10, discussion and possible action on temporary limited easements for backyard properties LLC and Bellardi Family Investments LLC.
So now that we know where the road is going to be, the next item on the agenda will cover the construction of that road and the, any additional lands that may be disturbed or utilized during the construction. So we would be requesting two temporary limited easements, which are also often referred to as construction easements, which are short-term easements that will be used during the construction process, either to store equipment or for grading purposes or for the storage of spoil or things of that nature. The, the TLEs would only exist for the length of the project. As, as indicated in the TL document, they would be no more than six months, but we would assume that they would be, wouldn't even need to be needed for that long. So there are two TLEs that are being requested, one on the backyard properties, property and one on the Bellardi property, which is south of the right-of-way that is being proposed. So not on city-owned land, but on the, on the actual remaining Bellardi parcel.
And I have a question before we, and they restore that back to the pre, pre, pre-construction condition? Does that make sense what I'm seeing? So like they can't just leave piles of spoils?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Right, I mean, in, in the case of grading, the grading would likely occur, should occur all within the right-of-way. So any change in grade should occur all within the right-of-way, within that 80-foot...
Regardless.
...section of right-of-way that has been dedicated.
So this is an easement to get...
Yeah, so it might be in, in a case where they, they need to turn around or they know that there's going to be a large pile that would extend beyond the 80 feet of right-of-way. So it's all, that's all determined as part of the engineering process and that's why we know the locations of these two TLEs and are able to...
So we've done this with... You don't want to see a mess left there or something, so, thank you.
Oh, they tell us.
Does this also need to be two separate motions?
It, it doesn't have to be, but it can be.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's your option to do it the same way or combine them into one. And just to be clear, the motion would be to authorize the city to request these TLEs from the two property owners since the city, they'll be getting, the city won't be giving these TLEs, it'll be the property owners.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the temporary limited easement for backyard properties for both the backyard parcel and the Bellardi parcel.
Sarah, second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments or concerns? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and possible action regarding full-time school resource officer agreement.
All some time ago, we had a part-time school resource officer, MOU requested...
Approve the full-time school resource officer agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, discussion and possible action on city's June financial packet.
Similar to previous months, I'm not seeing anything that's alarming. June is halfway through the year. The expenses are showing right around 50%, so that means we're on pace to spend almost everything we budgeted, but not go over. So I guess that means we're on pace to meet our expectations that we set when we established the 17th budget. The only thing that would change that is similar to what we've discussed several times is any overages for the fire department and any potential overtime with some of the vacancies we're experiencing in the police department.
Or a major DPW overtime issue, like flooding or...
Yeah.
Snowstorm. I mean, I got to throw DPW in there too.
It better not be snowing in July, otherwise we will have problems.
I just have one question. Did, did it really cost $16,000 to pay for lights at the ballpark and...
It picks up the last description, so that's the entire Alliant Energy bill. For many, many accounts in the city, it just, the way the program's set up.
Those were big lights.
It, it just grabs the last description.
What parked lights did we put up?
That's the electric bills for all the buildings, all the streetlights, everything. Streetlights.
We're gonna turn off every third streetlight now.
It's not the first time I've gotten that question, so that's why I have a really good
Do we have to take any action?
No.
Any questions, any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the June financial packet.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're the only one in favor, so, all right, this way it's gonna be. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? No tiebreaker there, thank you. General items that are not going to be included in committee reports. Going once, going twice. That's it, you're done. Don't come back for anything. No more speaking. Got it? Committee reports, I heard public safety was wild tonight.
Huge crowd. We had a presentation from Chief Scott over here about some of the issues that were brought up by Citizen Herbstenski and we voted unanimously for, at public safety, to have the, the rest of the council take a look at this and weigh in and see if we can appease the gentleman in that neighborhood. We'll get more details, I suppose, on that later. As far as the other issue, we were looking at the speed limit on park view drive and potential parking restrictions or bike lanes and things along that nature we're gonna look at again next month.
It's gonna be stuff that would be in the next year's budget, because we're at 50%
It, it might be possible that we have to turn the lights off on the little eagles.
All right, just so we know, we're going after the little children. And Linda's gonna be counting cars. Thank you for that report, elder person, Zajak. Parks and Rec met, right?
Yeah, we did.
Larry?
Lot of good stuff going on, the Story Gardens project continues to move forward. Design possibilities with a, a wonderful landscape designer is being investigated at a very reasonable rate, I might add, so that would be wonderful if that would happen. And we're working on being an Ice Age Trail city and thanks to Inga and our wonderful intern, I can say that, they're doing a great job on that. And also we're looking at doing some kind of a project to tie it in with the collection of seed from our prairies to promote pollinators in the community, so. And Inga, did I cover everything? Did I miss anything?
Those are probably the main ones.
Yeah, so, oh, and, and we're doing a survey of all the parks as part of that comprehensive plan. uh, comprehensive plan for, uh, recreation in the community.
What does that mean, the survey?
Well, we're going around, all the, all the Parks and Rec people have volunteered, all the committee people, and we're surveying the parks in terms of what equipment is there, what might need, uh, some future repairs, um, ADA compliance, um, that sort of thing, just potential uses for the park in the future, just to have an inventory and an idea of where to go in the future for improvements, so.
All right, great, thanks. Any other committee reports, tourism, anything? Historic preservation, we already...
Well, I... Oh, i- if you want to talk about that, the only thing I was going to mention was that the Tourism Development Committee did decide to work with CSI Media again on a twenty-eighteen Milton Tourism Guide, so be watching for those, for that information on advertising and everything in the near future, but if you want to talk about the webinar.
Yes, um, and tourism, also looking at a webinar that is, um, regarding our downtowns. Um, I did ask Inga to, to pass that information on to everybody, because we have been so proactive with both of our downtowns and dressing them up and making them look nice and taking care of business, so, um, I just felt like it would be something that the rest of the council would also like to see. It's, uh, ten o'clock Wednesday morning.
It's ten or ten-thirty tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Actually, Historic Preservation, actually, I know last week I mentioned that we were gonna have a, um, seminar going on here, this year, for rehabbing downtowns, if I'm right, Inga, do you have the dates, Inga? And actually...
It's September twenty-seventh at two PM, and we're going to do, uh, Milton House tour at twelve-thirty beforehand for all the attendees, and then we'll do a networking reception after the, the seminar, and it's called, "Dealing With Difficult Vacancies Downtown."
That's it, thank you.
Anything else on committee reports? Okay, staff reports, um, we'll start with the chief.
Uh, we're... Still at the tail end, but in the midst of a hairy process for our one vacation season. Also solve the egg case, if y'all remember that, and, um, we could eventually send that one.
Thanks, library?
So we've been very busy at the library. Um, June saw three thousand more people than June of two thousand and fifteen, when we were last upstairs. Um, we have weekly visits from the YMCA and daycares, Storytime is bringing in seventy to eighty people for our Storytimes. Um, we just formed another partnership with the school district, we have access to their calendar, so we can advertise our programs there. Um, we will set up interviews for our technology coordinator position, so hopefully we'll have someone hired soon for that. And we have a couple of big events coming up, another food truck rally on August twenty-seventh. We are doing a solar eclipse picnic for the big solar eclipse that's happening on August twenty-first, we have glasses for that, so you can look at the sun. Um, my team advisory board is doing another library lope, so that's September second, registration's open for that, if you want to come run a five K or a mile, um, and that's about it.
Thank you, and how's the discipline going when you have eighty kids for Storytime?
It's insane up there, it's, they kinda destroy the place, especially the creative play space, which is, kids are loving that creative play space area, um, they make quite the mess, but that's what we want, we ask for, I guess.
Great, thanks. Inga, anything?
Uh, no.
L? Who was gone last week, could you remind me?
I think, actually, I think Dan was the only one who was gone last week, I think everybody else was here.
Were you here? Howie was gone?
I think it was just Dan.
Just Dan?
Yeah, when we had to do the dance thing.
Oh, the dance, oh, the dance routine!
Yeah, we all had to dance, and I was on the dance, I do remember that.
I heard Scott wasn't here either.
No, Scott was here.
I think Scott was...
Scott's got some bustin' moves.
I have dance on video.
Oh, that's right! Oh, we should have set that up to be replayed.
There isn't one.
You need to develop one then. Anything, Dan?
No, um, we'll be starting the twenty-eighteen budget process here in the not-too-distant future, so we're halfway through the year, so time to start thinking about next year.
And the bake sales that we're gonna need. Howie?
Nope, just regular stuff, so projects are finally almost all done, just about all of them are, so...
Great, so who do we contact at the county if we have an issue with the bike trail? That we...
Oh, we, it's, um, the slipping area was outside of the city.
I know, I know, but I've gotten so many complaints, I need to tell them who to complain to, because it's not me.
We kinda just took care of it, 'cause it was so close to the city, so it's, it's done for now, because we've helped them with the park trail a little bit, so that part we just cleaned up today.
What did we do?
Just swept the mud off the trail, so...
We didn't stop the leak, like, we didn't install a culvert or anything.
No, those, those leaks are from the highway, they're not really leaks, it just keeps draining off the, from so much rain, it's, it's leaks off the embankments on the highways, so...
So a culvert wouldn't solve that? Okay, well, at least I can tell people that.
Yeah, it's entire ditches and the hills on the highways, they just keep draining down towards it, so...
Okay, okay.
Thank you for fixing that.
Okay. Any other staff reports? Are you guys ready for team building? This is... No, you don't, and you know I just think of this at the last minute, so...
Can we make sure Dave didn't hang up?
Dave?
It is his birthday.
Oh my God, it's his birthday, and we didn't, you guys sang "Happy Birthday"? I mean, I suppose you could, like, exempt yourself on your birthday? But, but Dave, that's not in the ordinance that you guys all passed, when you said everybody had to be here, didn't say, uh, you don't have to participate on your birthday?
Look, Dave, make a motion to adjourn.
But Dave can go last, Dave can go last, which means Larry goes first. No, Dan goes first, 'cause Dan was gone. Oh, yeah.
There were lots of other people that weren't here.
Right, right, we can still, and we'll end with Dave, okay. All right, so, and not including sports, sports is not, can not be part of your answer. Okay, this is really easy, you love this one, it's so easy. What is your favorite TV or cable network series? Like, for example, um, a lot of people seem to think Game of Thrones is really cool. That would be, that would be an example of a favorite that some people have, so...
But you mentioned you can't call that, right?
Yeah, and only, yeah. And we have to wait until Teresa remembers the name of hers.
Maybe she's third to last.
Okay, Dan, go.
Simpsons.
Okay, Mark? Okay, just a show then. Do you watch TV? Yeah, right, there's always reruns, right? Is that your final answer? Okay. Howie, he took yours.
No, does that mean movies or TV?
It could be movies or a series.
Pirates of the Caribbean, the movies.
I just went to the theater and saw that. Chief?
The Office.
Office?
My Lanyard.
Tells us a lot about what goes on in the library, doesn't it? Linda? Jeremy? Ryan?
We go with two, but they're both off the air now, but, uh, no, actually, Firefly?
Oh, I like that one!
And Leverage.
Inga? I watch too much TV, so I have a lot of things, um, if you haven't watched The One Hundred on the CW, that's actually pretty good, um, I really like The Goldbergs, but Parks and Recreation.
Okay, my favorites, well, in the fall is This Is Us, and then Shameless, that's like my all-time favorite, probably 'cause that's my life.
All-time favorite, Star Trek: The Next Generation.
Teresa?
Uh, House of Cards, with Kevin Spacey.
It's just, it's just like being up here, isn't it?
That's right, that's right. You lie, you cheat, you...
I have not killed anybody yet that we know of. Larry? Dave, it's all you.
NCIS.
All of them?
Original one, not...
Oh. Yeah, like, is that the one with the Miami?
That's CSI.
That's CSI, oh, all right. All right, our next meeting is Tuesday, August first, two thousand and seventeen at seven PM. And, before y'all leave, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
It's a tie.
It's a tie. We're staying, sorry!